We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I will be adopting the agenda.
Motion made in second, feel your favor?
Aye.
You have a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I would move that we do with the exception that I would request that the January meeting minutes be tabled because of an error in communication and some of the information in it will be corrected.
I'll say.
Motion made in second, feel your favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on down to public comment period. Citizens may adjust counsel on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Out of respect for counsel and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes. Total of the comment. While they're making a comment, whoever's making the comment, please, no comments from the audience. Total of twenty minutes for public comment. And once you've spoke, then that's it. And when you come up to speak, please state your name and address for the record. So, go ahead and.
Teresa Sitzma, 702 Southeast Street. And I have to begin here with a letter for your reading, and I'm going to read a letter. Dear Council, my wife is reading this because I am unable to be there. I am currently at an inpatient treatment program for my alcohol issue. As you may or may not know, I was put on administrative leave due to a complaint of the odor of alcohol on my person. I volunteer and comply with all aspects of this investigation. I have been truthful and cooperative throughout it. I have never challenged the complaint. No impairment was recorded by anyone who interacted with me at the time. I made a bad judgment call, and my only explanation is the lack of decisive direction and literal manpower has resulted in an overwhelming demand and stress on me as well as my family. I believe the circumstances of my job in the past six months indisputably contributed to the issue at hand, while still accepting full responsibility and accountability for my personal behavior. I am human and make mistakes. I went to Roberta and asked for help. I told her several times I needed help and begged to keep my job. For ten years, my family and I have worked to better our community. On honesty and integrity, I've never been questioned in this time. I feel this letter is degrading, malicious, and unfair. I was told by Roberta herself that the issue from 2012 would not be a factor in this decision. My union rep told me as well that any disciplinary action over two years old cannot be considered. In my defense, this action was never, or this accusation was never investigated. I was simply offered a last chance agreement, which I took and have had no disciplinary action since. I will be requesting from you, as I have not received the full investigatory file that I was assured I would by the town manager. Law enforcement steps up to help the community, and our community prides itself on helping one another in times of need. I need help, and I am actively and honestly working to fully benefit from the program I am in. I don't feel that the termination action taken on behalf of the town of Lakeview by Roberta Van Der Wold reflects either a working solution or the compassion and support by which our community works to serve its members. I am committed to my career. I am humbly asking the town council to consider my case for reinstatement. In the event that the council cannot act on my behalf on this matter, I'm asking for a revised letter of termination excluding reference to any resolved issues of 2012. I believe my courage speaks for itself. I also believe that, as is disturbingly common in law enforcement, I fail to resist the extraordinary pressures while providing the only department coverage for an extended period of time.
How long do you got?
My treatment offers me an opportunity to rebuild my personal strengths, and it is my goal to return to law enforcement in my home of Lake County and Lakeview as a better, stronger officer and community member, which is signed, dated, and no raised by my husband. So, speaking on his behalf in that situation, I'd like to speak on my behalf for just one moment. I personally have some legal questions that are being answered in regards to this letter. One question I have for the council was, was this a decision that was brought before you? You don't have to answer that, it's just a rhetorical question. And the second question is, as you read the letter, you will see that it stated there's a forensic expert involved, and I would like a copy of his qualifications. The other thing I want to say is, I'm not ashamed or embarrassed by my husband. It takes a lot of courage to tell a whole town that you have a problem, which is what I'm doing by being here in this meeting. And quite honestly, it's something that affects a lot of families that nobody wants to talk about. And so, I just wanted to thank all the town that listens to this online and everyone here for supporting our family.
Can I have a copy of that letter that you just wrote?
I will write, I will get you a copy.
Okay. Somebody else?
I'm Amanda O'Brien, and I want to discuss real quick something that happened last week. There was an individual who came in and asked for an application for police chief. And he was told that you are not accepting any applications because you're contracting with the sheriff's department, which I agree is a great idea. We should be applying, working with the sheriff's department. But in the meantime, like you yourself said today during the work session, it could take a while to get this done. And in the meantime, our sheriff is understaffed because he now has to cover the county and the town. Calls are not being answered in the way that they should be answered. So, why, in that meantime, are you guys not considering an interim position to cover and fill this place so you guys can have law enforcement in the town of Lakeview until that contract is signed? Furthermore, my understanding is that there is somebody going through the academy that is agreed to be hired once he graduates. So, are you going to have a brand-new officer with no experience come work under no supervision? So, whether or not my friend was allowed an application or is even considered, you guys should be considering somebody for an interim position so that our deputies are not overworked, so we don't have a situation such as Officer Sitzma is going through right now because he went six months without any support. You guys should be considering something, and I'd like to know why you have somebody as highly qualified as the gentleman who walked in told point-blank, "We are not accepting applications because we're going to be contracting," knowing full well that that contract could take several more months.
Well, when I talked to the sheriff, sheriff's one is doing the hiring. Okay, if we hire somebody and the sheriff doesn't want them, after we sign a contract with them, then they're out of a job.
That's correct, and that's why I said, "Why not consider an interim one until the contract is fulfilled?"
Because if we have an interim one, it's still the same situation. Because if we contract with, which we're planning on doing, with the sheriff, and the sheriff doesn't want the interim group that's here.
Correct, but an interim position knows going into it that it is interim. It is not a guarantee you get the job. It's a job for right now. So, in the meantime, again, you know, crime seems to have gone way up if you're reading "Wait on me in the post" because our deputies are overworked, there are no officers. And this is a viable solution, and it seems like it's not being considered as a temporary one. Again, an interim position is just that, it's interim. It's not a permanent position. And anybody who takes on and accepts an interim position is fully aware of that.
Okay. Any more comments, please?
Hello, my name is Daniel Jasdrab. I've been in the community for two years. I personally live in the area of Theresa. They're good people, they're good members of the community. You're in a very high-stress position, and people drink when they're stressed out sometimes. It can lead to disease, and it is treatable, and you should allow a second chance. That's all I can say.
Anybody else?
Lori Crocker, 316 Mountain View. What I want to talk about is street signs and identifying where you are even on GPS. Our street sign on that corner has been gone for two years now. And so, I know there might be a plan, but I don't know what the plan is. How do we get our street sign back? Do we need to have a community donation? Do we need to have a volunteer committee that goes around and identifies where all the signs are that are missing in town? But we would like, that's a major thoroughfare right there, Third and Mountain View. And the GPS tells people to come to Mountain View, but there's, they go past the railroad tracks, hunting Mountain View. So, anyway, if we need to get donations from the neighborhood, if we need a committee to go around and help them to identify what street signs are missing, I think we can do that. But what is the plan for replacing the street signs after two years?
We've just been dealing with them on an administrative basis. I wasn't aware that yours was gone, but we do need a lot of ours that are even there, are faded and getting pretty big.
Right, right, but we reported it two years ago. It was a police report, and the, I mean, I didn't report it, but the neighbors on the corner do because it's on their first side of the street. But it is a major intersection, and so, however we can get that, we would sure appreciate it.
We've got some money in the budget to do, so we'll continue.
And if you need help going around identifying where signs are needed, I'll be happy to do that. Take somebody with me, and I can do that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, go ahead.
Mitchell Lee Stevens, 554 Southeast Street, Lakeview. And the reason I'm here today is twofold. One, I feel we've got a really serious problem with this community, but the lack of a city police department. As long as I can remember, we have had a city police department, and we've had some pretty good officers. And one of them was a guy that had been born and raised here. And I'm talking about Terry Long. He was run off of here. And yet, he came from a community over on the coast where he had over two decades of exemplary service. What's wrong? We can't afford to lose people like that. One of the things we always seem to want to get is people from out of town to run our community. I think that's a serious mistake. And seeing how the serious mistake has happened, and you people have taken my tax money, and part of it goes for a police department, and we don't have one. Get your computer running and figure it out, and give me a tax refund. I've been paying for a police department that doesn't exist. And if you're going to run the community like this, I'm going to pick and choose these people that you pay to run the community. And I don't like the way they're running it. So, whatever you're paying our city manager, whatever I pay, I'd like a refund there, too. I'm not at all happy with it. It's been a lot better community than it's turned out to be these last few years. We've got some new people on the town council. Let's get our acts together. Let's get back to the kind of community that we used to be. Let's get some good local people to run our community. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I heard a radio program recently about Springfield, Oregon. I'm nervous. And they work with Eugene Police Department, and they have training for the ambulance, the dispatchers, their first responders, their police, and they all work together as a community. And they think it works out better than separately. And there are towns across the United States that are trying to emulate them. And I think we're going in a different direction, and I think it's wrong. I think we're hurting our town by breaking off our police. And the town manager talks about possibly sending dispatch, contracting dispatchers out of town. I think we need to think about who we have as a town manager, and what kind of history did she bring to that job that sends her in that direction? And I think we need to come up with a different plan.
See, anybody else? Caring none, we'll move on to role business. Anyone have anything on role business?
Well, we tingled the liaison position. Did anybody move forward on that?
No, we need to do that during the work session before we double our time.
Yeah, but still, let's.
Under new business, the resolution's not there because we haven't made a decision changing the traffic pattern. Dennis, you want to explain your concept on?
Actually, it'd be the traffic pattern up on North 10th, 11th, and 12th, where you come off the highway, you drive north, and then eventually ends up down on J Street. Those roads up there, where we're thinking about having longer traffic is only wide enough for a single vehicle. So, it's come note-to-note to somebody up there. One of you's got to back down, or end up in somebody's yard. So, talking with Jeff, what we was thinking about doing is right at the corner of, when you come off the highway and hit 11th Street going north towards 12th, having a one-way going up from 12th Street. Till you hit that spot on 11th, and then it could be two-way traffic. It's a little bit wider in between 10th and 11th.
So, you're looking everything off of J Street to go east?
No, no, when you come off the highway at Bond's Market, if I had a map. So, as you come off the highway here, the one-way would start right here at this house, here. And it'd be one-way going up from 12th Street till you hit 11th. This street right here is just so narrow there. You know, I've come note-to-note with people there for years, and you end up backing on.
On 12th, I can see it, but I thought 10th and 11th were wide enough for two vehicles?
10th and 11th will be two-way traffic. The only one-way traffic is going to be at the top of 11th.
Okay, down 12th.
Going from J, the traffic would be going east and then south until you hit 11th. So, it'd be one-way going up.
Okay, up 12th, okay.
And then it would open up to two-way traffic again at 11th.
Okay.
How many homes is it? Was that one, two, three, four, five?
On 12th Street, there's only myself right now, and there's somebody else. It's working on some property up there.
That was my next question.
There's potential for more, but they're not.
So, my question is, has anybody, is anybody, is anybody, is this idea?
I've spoken to people across the street.
He had a neighbor on the other?
That's the only neighbor, and he's just. And then he's looking at, that's the other house hanging, I think they're buying another house, too. Well, that would pretty much pick up that whole block.
Yeah, yeah, because the other lots are over here.
I mean, you guys really need to go up and drive it, and you'll get the understanding of where I'm at. And you're starting your own, when you come uphill, you're going uphill here, and you're going uphill this way. And you meet on that hill, there's no place to go.
I went up there the other day, lost, and my van barely fits through there. And it comes up a peak, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, and you can't see around it, and when you get the kids blind through there, it's just. It's been something that's bothered me for years, but I think I'm getting to this point.
So, I have two questions about this, as I just drove a few minutes away. Snowplow and stuff, I was actually, shouldn't be, hopefully won't be a problem?
It shouldn't be a problem. We probably have the grader, so we have to eat away with it. Daryl and I looked at it this afternoon, and I think the problem, which is the narrow bottleneck right at the turn there, I think that where 11th Street is, if you just put "Do not enter" right there, and no signage on down on 12th Street, and then it would still make it accessible. You could leave towards J Street, but if you put "Do not enter" one-way, then that's going to make it where you can't pull into those properties from J. It's going to be quite an increase in traffic on 11th to get to those properties because it would only have one-way flow. So, you'd have to come up 10th or 11th to get to those properties, Dennis's and his neighbors included. So, I think if you just put "Do not enter" right at the narrow point coming from the south, then no signage the rest of the way on 12th. And then people could pull into their driveways, and if that became an RV park, I know that was an option at one point, they'd be able to leave towards J and not have to.
Not have to go all around.
So, basically, what you're doing is just restricting, I guess, the population to one way.
From the corner to the beginning.
So, there's, the people that live on that street, basically, you're either direction they want to.
I think that's a lot.
Yeah, and then it only takes two signs that way. Historically, every place we have a one-way in town, if somebody lives two houses down, some people stretch it to three, they go that way, hang.
Welcome to Lakeview.
So, you know, that way would do, the traffic isn't there, the only way, just a "Do not enter" at the corner. That just keeps them from coming off the highway around that corner. I've been up there when it's been snowing, and if you're not careful in the corner, you'll slide down in that other lot right there.
While we're driving around, I noticed that there's a, you know, a really small 15 mile per hour zone that's facing the north, and I should come around that on the 12th. One thing I did find with the council, I'm not sure what TSP says, the transportation system, on this, that even talks about the street, but doesn't specify.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't mention anything like that.
So, and in that, in all of my, these aren't very known, I think, of them. But why, we have other ones, I mean, I've got North Fifth, between H and J as well. It's extremely narrow, probably difficult to file for sure.
Yeah.
But this, to me, seems like the most appropriate step, or just that portion, you want to know it's south, where it connects from 11th to 12th, and make it a one-way right there. And again, the right-of-way is bright enough that if ever there were funds and we wanted to widen the roads there and make it, you know, more accessible, we could, but certainly with the current conditions that we have, and you make it more safe, I think it's appropriate to make it a one-way street, just not stretch it. And then to add signs, just "Do not enter" on 12th going towards.
We have the corner south, yeah.
And then just a one-way sign on top of, on 11th and the other street, sort of, it'd be simple. But let's take, oh, it's streets.
I was thinking all around the world, we might as well go along, three signs at least.
We need free signs.
Do you have links to ground the ball, submit those in?
What's this, those are pictures of the street view on those.
You mean nine minutes?
Yeah, see all those two DUIs right there, because it corners right up here.
I think it's a good idea. Just, we need to just table it until we get our next meeting and have our meeting.
Yeah, if I think those two signs, that way the J Street people aren't affected.
Yeah, makes it a lot safer up there. That's a bad point. So, I motion to table it until next meeting so that we can get a resolution drawn up, and then we'll handle it.
Motion made in second, feel your favor?
Aye.
One other, I have here, we have a letter from Mike Deason. Dear Town Council, Happy New Year and save this date, please. I am writing to you to request street closures again on the 3rd Saturday in July, and only July 20th, 2018. This will be our ninth annual Occupied E Street Fair and Car Show. We would like to request E Street be closed from Lake County Chambers Office to Affordable Fitness and Center Street, and then F Street to Amerititle, which is north of Forest out here. As you know, this event has become very popular, one in Old Town Lakeview. A lot of businesses from around the town contribute to its success. We once again ask for town approval, and also ask the town to become involved. Several projects have been done, with several more on the radar. Thank you in advance, Mike Deason, Chairman of Occupied E Street. Are you motion to grant this street closure?
I make a motion to approve the road closure on the 20th of July this year with the streets and times as previous years have been approved.
I'll say.
Motion made in second, feel your favor?
Aye.
Okay, you sent Mike Deason's letter, is that here? Thank you. Move on down to mayor and council, if any council has anything? The only thing I have is that the gala was a great time, a lot of fun, and Jessica, you and Brianna did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And I have nothing else. So, as of this time, at 4:30, we will adjourn regular council session and move into executive session as per ORS 192660. Meeting council is canceled. Adjourn at 4:30.